Do we have someone to take minutes?
It's stuck upstairs. It's being recorded, so it'll be okay.
Okay. Let the record note that Bill's not here and Barb's not here. We do have a quorum. Commissioner Troutman is here representing the county board. Oh, and here comes our minute taker, and here comes Barb. So, we're only missing Bill. Okay. Approval of the August 10th, 2015 minutes. Did everybody get a chance to read through those?
Move to approve as published.
Second.
Hold on just a minute, I gotta...
Okay.
Short pause.
Okay, let's go back.
Okay, it's been moved by Sig and seconded by Lori that we approve the August 10th minutes. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Approval of the agenda. It's not a hugely long agenda. May I have a motion for approval of the agenda?
I'll move to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved or seconded?
All right, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Consent calendar. The following items have been placed... Well, actually, we'll talk about what the staff would like to pull first before we talk about consent.
Sure. PJ Conover, Director, Planning Department. In discussions with the members today, we'd like to pull four, five, six, and nine. And we can do them in that order.
Okay. All right, the following items have been placed on the consent calendar for action to be taken on all items in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent calendar by any planning commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration. The findings of the planning commission are recommendations to the Pennington County Board of Commissioners who will make the final decisions. So PJ, could you read into the record the items that still remain on the consent calendar? Items three, seven, and eight.
Okay. Item three, conditional use permit 1516 for Nick Hobart to allow for a guest house on a subject property in general agriculture district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of CUP 0810 with six conditions. Item seven, conditional use permit review 1501 for Sherri Tanner to review a single-wide mobile home to be used as a single-family residence while constructing a single-family residence in a general agriculture district. Staff recommends the continuation of conditional use permit 1501 to the September 14th, 2015 Planning Commission meeting. Item eight, conditional use permit 1517 for Charles Ray to allow a family cemetery on a subject property in general agriculture district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit 1316 with five conditions.
Okay, are there any planning commissioners that would like to remove one of those three items from the consent calendar? Any audience members who would like further discussion on these items? Can I make a comment? Yes, Lori. Number eight...
Yep, we're just gonna go back to that. Yep, we're just gonna go back to that. Also recommend approval of conditional use permit 1517 with four conditions for number eight.
Oh, I see. Okay. Since there are no more items to be pulled from the consent calendar, can we have a motion to approve that consent calendar?
So moved. Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Item four.
Good morning, commissioners. Kelsey Roush, Planning Department. Let's see. Just looking at their submittal here to see how tall the cell tower is for item number four. Looks like they want to add three antennas and a junction box to the 285-foot level of the existing 300-foot tall tower. So it wouldn't be taller than 300 feet than the existing.
So the antennas would be 15 or less?
Yes.
Okay. I just remembered that's a lot of controversy on that, and I just want to make sure it stays the same.
It's not getting another 100 feet tall, no.
Okay. So, given that information, I would not be opposed to...
Okay.
At 300 feet, doesn't it require aircraft lighting?
I believe it is lit.
It is lit already?
That tower is lit.
Oh, yeah, this was approved in 2008, so all of the existing, yeah, original.
So all the lighting is in place?
Yes.
Thank you.
Is there further discussion? If not, staff would entertain a motion for approval of this conditional use permit extension 0810 with eight conditions?
So moved. Second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve the extension of conditional use permit 0810 with eight conditions. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Onto item five.
Good morning, Brittany Molitor. Item number five is conditional use permit review 1038 to review a home occupation and auto restoration shop in a suburban residential district. And the reason that I pulled this off of the consent calendar is that I did do a site visit after the agenda was done and after the staff report was done. And once I did the staff report, I wanted to change condition number 10 and recommend that it be reviewed in three years instead of one year. When I was out there on site, they were following all of the conditions. The site is very well-kept. I didn't see any reason to continue to do it every year. We haven't received any complaints or concerns from any of the neighbors. So I kind of feel like three years is probably reasonable instead of going out every year. So that's my recommendation. Pardon?
Any questions for Brittany?
We had so much trouble with that one. And it was so controversial. It seems almost unbelievable that we can go to three years.
A good thing.
Yes, when I was out there, their shop was in order. The vehicles that were on the site at the... To my knowledge, I don't know all the years of vehicles, but they were older vehicles. The property was very well-kept and clean, so I don't see any reason to do it every year. We haven't received any complaints. Any complaints that I'm aware of, I looked through all of the stuff from the previous ordinance officer, and I didn't find any documented. I believe so, yes.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Chair would entertain a motion? Recommendation from staff is to continue or to... Yeah. Conditional use permit be extended with 11 conditions with number 10 amended to three years.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to extend conditional use permit 1038 with 11 conditions. Condition number 10 amended to review in three years. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Onto item six.
All right, item six is a conditional use permit review for a guest house. I did some digging and realized that they had not yet filed their deed restriction. So he has his real estate lawyer working on it this week, and we will get it filed at the Register of Deeds and be done with it. I'm recommending to extend this to the September... Let's see. I think probably the one after the September 14th, Lori. Is it the 28th? Yeah, I would say the 28th because the 14th is full. It won't hurt anything to have an extra two weeks on it.
A comment just on the staff report. Yes, this is conditional use permit. It doesn't say review on the title of your staff report.
Oh, all right. We'll add that in next time.
Good catch. Are there any questions for Kelsey? Hearing none. Staff would entertain a motion. Staff recommendation is now to continue this conditional use permit review until September 28th.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to continue this conditional use permit review 1316 to the September 28th meeting. Further discussion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Can I ask a question? I noticed this one recommends review in two years. What's the criteria again you use for two or three?
It depends on the use.
Okay.
And if we've had any issues. After that, this next two-year one, if I review it, I'll probably put it on...
Ten to three?
Yeah, I'll probably either do it to three or...
Complaint only.
Or complaint only. Just because it's an awesome property and I don't see any issues with it, so...
I know we've been trying to be consistent. I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah. We usually do two or three reviews and then put it to.
And extend. Okay.
Further discussion? Hearing none. Staff or Chair would entertain a motion on this conditional use permit review? Or did we have a motion? We did, okay. Okay, hearing no more discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Onto item nine.
Item nine is rezone 1509 and Comprehensive Plan Amendment 1509 to rezone 7.615 acres from highway service to low-density residential and to amend the Pennington County Comprehensive Plan to change future land use from highway service district to low-density residential district. I just want to change the recommendation to continue the rezone until the September 28th, 2015 Planning Commission meeting in order to re-advertise.
28th?
Yes.
Okay, are there any questions for Brittany? Does anybody in the audience want to comment? Okay, staff would... Chair would entertain a motion?
Motion. Second.
To continue it to the September 28th meeting? Is that your motion? Okay, further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Onto item 10.
Sorry. Kind of got out of order. Sorry. Item 10 is construction permit 1513. It was originally... They wanted to develop 38 lots in the Murphy Ranch Estate subdivision, which included three phases, 5A, 5B, and 5C. And now staff is just gonna recommend the four lots in Phase 5A. Let's see, there were some concerns from the city of Rapid City and our highway department because the lots in 5B and 5C have not yet been platted through the city. And I know that for these construction permits, we just deal with erosion and sediment control necessarily. But because of the concerns with the highway department, I had just recommended 5A because those lots have actually been platted with the city of Rapid City. But there's the area, so there's just four lots there. Some of the work has been started. And then there's a detention facility that'll also be completed in that phase. Is that correct, Ron? Yes. So staff is recommending approval of the construction permit with 11 conditions. That the conditions just includes Phase 5A.
Questions for Brittany? Barb?
Since this is within the three-mile limit, who will be overseeing the roadwork and the sewers and everything? Does the city do that or does the county do that?
The city does it as part of the plating. So they bond, correct, with the city of Rapid City. This area is located in our MS4, so we have an NPDES permit for this area. So we just oversee the erosion and sediment control and things like that for this area. But as far as the road improvements, it's through the city's plating. It's one of the requirements of their plating. And they do work with the highway department because Longview is a county road.
Thank you.
Brittany, can you show me on the schematic where the retention pond is gonna be? I couldn't really tell.
Yeah, it's... There. So the four lots are...
Oh, okay. The applicant is here. Would you like to say anything, Mr. Davis? You're good? Any more discussion? Chair would entertain a motion for approval?
With approval of CP 15-13 with 11 conditions?
For Phase 5A only?
5A only, yeah.
There a second? It's been moved and seconded to approve construction permit 1513 for Phase 5A only with 11 conditions. I'm sorry. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carry.
Thank you.
Item 11 is vacation of plat 1501 to vacate the plat of Lot A. The applicant owner are Martin or Shirley Prince. One of the applicants is in the audience today. The size of the property is one acre. The applicant again is requesting to vacate plat A of plat book 13, page 236. The purpose of this plat is to consolidate it into their larger property, which surrounds it on three sides. This is a picture of the zoning. As you can see, surrounded by general agriculture. This is the distance, almost eight miles, from New Underwood to the east. This is a picture of the property. As you can see in the top center, that's the one acre they'd like to consolidate into that entire section below, which is just about 325, 26 acres. On that one-acre property, there is a single-family residence with a current operating permit. It does take access off of Highway 1416. It does have... Staff has determined three different approaches, and that is one of the conditions the applicant will have to appear before the Board of Commissioners to seek approval for all three of those approaches. During the research, staff also noticed that two of the silos on the property were not permitted. Everything else is put on the property prior to 1994 and did not require building permit. This morning, the applicant did come to our office and applied for those two permits. So staff will be removing that as a condition. It was routed through the interdepartmental review, and no items of circumstance came up. Therefore, staff recommends approval of vacation of plat 1501 with two conditions. Removing number one.
Questions for PJ?
What's the... In some ways, it's all general egg, even though one acre parcel...
Yes.
What's the benefit of consolidating that?
I would have to ask the applicant that question.
I guess I don't have any issues. It just seems like, you know, as far as anything that can be done with it, since it's zone general egg, it would be allowed.
It would be, yep. I know that the Office of Equalization has talked to the applicant about what this could do because if they wanted to separate off that single-family residence again, they would have to replat it. But they still wanted to move forward with this consolidation. And again, Ms. Prince is in the audience. If you'd like to speak with her.
I guess I don't have any issues with it. I just didn't quite understand.
Could be lot lines. It could be, yeah, because it does constrict it a little bit. You lose 50 feet all the way around because you have 25 on either side, so...
Step backs, yeah. Okay.
Any other questions for PJ? Ms. Prince is in the audience. Would you like to say anything? Just would you come to the microphone, please? And state your name, please, for the record.
Amen.
Thank you. My name is Shirley Prince, and my husband and I own the property that's in question. A number of years ago, my father-in-law bought this one acre from us in question. And he has since passed away. And we would just like to have it all back the way it was. And then that would complete Section 33. We would have all Section 33. And we're just kind of trying to kind of clean up some loose ends, getting ready to pass the land on down. And we just thought this would be just a little bit better to have it the way it was. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions? Chair would entertain a motion to vacate the plat 1501 with two conditions?
So moved.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the vacation of plat 1501 with two conditions, with first condition being removed. Any discussion, further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Onto item 12.
Item 12 is conditional use permit 1518 to illuminate an existing on-premise sign within 1,500 feet of a residential zoning district. The applicant is Rapid Valley United Methodist Church. A conditional use permit is required for illuminated sign, not just a sign permit because of its proximity to suburban residential. During staff review, it was determined that we couldn't find a building permit for the sign that they put on the property or a sign permit that they put there. So I've talked with the applicant, and they're okay with this continuation. They do concur so that they can find out when it was actually constructed. And once we get that, then we can move forward. Because right now, it's a sign that is in question, so we don't want to permit or recommend approval on something that's in question. And we have so far received what the complainant has called an appeal, but it's not real, an appeal, just a letter of concern, which will be included in the report once it's written. So staff recommends to continue conditional use permit 1518 to the September 14th, 2015 Planning Commission meeting with the applicant's concurrence.
I'll make a motion?
Sure.
I make a motion that we continue conditional use permit 15-18 to the September 28th?
14th.
14th meeting?
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to continue conditional use permit CU 1518 to the September 14th Planning Commission meeting. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carry.
Ready for next one?
Item 13.
Item 13, conditional use permit 1519 to allow for an existing double-wide manufactured home to be used as a single-family residence in a general commercial district. The applicant is Mitch Morris, and the property in question is approximately 10 acres. Traditionally, in the office, conditional use permit is required for a single-family residence secondary to a commercial use on commercial property. During staff research, it was determined that in our ordinance, it does allow a dwelling unit. And as the dwelling unit is defined, single-family residence will be okay as long as the applicant lives on the premises. Spoke with the applicant on the phone. He says he does reside there. And I did confirm that with the treasurer's office, that is where he receives his mail, one of the places. So therefore, staff is pulling this off the agenda. No motion is required. And we're going to refund the applicant the money with the interpretation of the ordinance.
Are there any questions for PJ or comments? Okay. Onto item 14. Pennington County Comprehensive Plan. Here, you want to pass one of those to Barb? Here's PJ.
I'm sorry, yes.
There's sort of the summary of...
Thank you.
PJ and I met last week to talk about the comprehensive plan revision and...
You can stay.
Talk for about 45 minutes about a possible process for reviewing or at least discussing whether or not we want to review the comprehensive plan and update it. And it was suggested at the last meeting that we form a committee, not a formal committee that's endorsed by the board so that we have to do formal minutes and meeting notices, but just, you know, some interested citizens to get together and talk about making a recommendation to the county board for going forward. So we thought that the committee purpose would be to determine whether or not the comprehensive plan needs to be updated, assuming that it does, to recommend a process to make that happen. And finally, if approved by the county board, to oversee the process if we can get volunteers that'll hang in for that long a time. We'd like to, for an expected outcome of this committee, get a recommendation to the county board by the end of the year. We talked about meetings, the number of meetings necessary to get there and what those meetings would essentially entail. Maximum of five meetings. We'd like to do them earlier rather than later, but it sort of depends on when we can get people, you know, to volunteer for this committee. One in September, two each in October and November. We talked about what kind of a process we would have to educate that committee so that they can make a good decision and pass some recommendation on to the county board. And that would include educating them about what a comprehensive plan is, reviewing the current plan, looking at other plans, surrounding counties' plans, maybe Rapid City's and some others, and then discuss and make formal recommendations to the board. Does that seem to be about what we talked about?
Yep.
Good, okay. And then we talked about membership. We thought maybe three from planning and zoning, three from this body, one from Hill City, one from Rapid City, one from Wall, and two from the ranching community. Lindell recommended that we have at least one from the townships, which I am embarrassed to say I did not know what the townships were.
Primarily out east.
Yeah. They're areas of the county out east of Wall, actually, north and south of Wall as well. But they're part of the ranching, part of the county. So the only issue we have to talk about there... Well, we have a couple of issues. Do you guys agree with the committee membership? And also, we had four volunteers from this body, and we can only have three because of open-meeting laws. So we need to resolve who... If this makeup of the committee is okay with you guys, who from this body would?
Who, I'm sorry. Who are the four?
Jim, me, Sig, and Barb.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Did we check with open-meeting laws just to make sure the process that we're talking about will work?
If you have less than a quorum, is that what...
No. Some, you know, they made some changes in that open-meetings laws. And to be truthful, I'm not exactly sure. But I think we do have to be a little bit careful about whether we don't have to publish it or not. I am wondering if you wouldn't have to publish it. And I just want to make sure that's checked out.
Okay. Even with less than a quorum? We can check on it, absolutely.
There, yeah, I think we need to because there just were some changes made in this last year because everybody was saying that we're doing these kinds of committees down there in Pierre, and that wasn't right. And, you know, there was a real argument. And like I said, I truthfully can't remember exactly what it is. But we might want to just check it, just to be sure.
Okay.
Best to be legal.
Yeah.
For sure.
Are you trying to keep it an odd number, just a tiebreaker?
Exactly.
Well, I was just kind of wondering. We have two from ranching. I assume that means the eastern part of the county.
Right, yeah.
Do we want something that's representing more like forested?
And I was gonna bring that up too, Sig. If you're gonna do two ranching, you could have one from either side because ranching is very different on either end of our county.
That's true.
And, you know, I just think it might be something...
Okay, do you want to do that? One from the western part of the county and one from the eastern part? Is that enough representation? I guess that evens it out pretty well, doesn't it?
Yeah, is that an effort to address the logging thing? Is that the idea? I mean.
Well, I, I think it's, it's just different.
Right, yeah, no, I, I agree, it is.
Because you're, most of the land is more patchwork through the Forest Service rather than big, you know, expanses in the eastern part of the county, and I think it's just, you know, different impact to the public on the lands, and so I think it is a different.
Probably different issues to those ranchers as well.
We don't have to invite the Forest Service.
Okay, they probably don't want to come either.
Yeah, probably not.
You want to check on the publishing, what the interpretation of the state regulation prior to determining the final number?
I'm sorry, I don't understand.
The representatives and the number of people you want on the committee, do you want to research Commissioner Troutman's question?
Oh, sure.
Before finalizing?
Absolutely, yeah.
But that's not so much tied to the number, is it? Or is it just the fact that we're having a committee?
Just in case.
I, I just think ranching, you need, because I, I thought Karen said, like, from the east, and actually there are townships in the west.
In the west as well.
Yeah, and if we have.
On the west, on the map.
Yeah, there are townships all over, everywhere, that's allowed, but, but I just think ranching is different on the two ends. So.
Okay. Yeah, I'd be happy to do that. I think that's a good idea. So we still have to decide who from the Planning Commission, since we have four volunteers?
Let me ask you a question. So can we create a committee if we wish and advertise it and have as many people on it as we want, or whatever composition we want? Or do we have to, does the county commission have to exercise that power? Or do we have that power?
I'd still like to bring it before the commissioners regardless. To keep them well informed of what's going on.
But we cannot create our own.
We've, we've had committees before. Sure. We've had committees like, you know. Yeah.
Informal, if you will, like this, right? Okay.
Yeah. We both the wind ordinance?
I'd still like to take it before them, not necessarily appointing anyone unless they want to take that type of formal action, but we'd like to keep them informed.
Commissioner Troutman, do you think that the, that the county board would be, would be happier if they could appoint members? Or would they take, would they be happy to have us find volunteers? I hate to delay any longer.
I know. I, I, I do see the delay, but I think it's right. I, I think it's right for them to discuss it. I don't have a problem personally, but there could be some that think that there should be more hands-on from the, from the commission.
This is sort of a policy issue, you know?
It is.
In a sense, and, and I would think the commission would be sort of, or the board would be sort of sensitive to that, that if we went out and, you know, I, I think it would be good if they would simply provide that we have a committee and make it a public one and, and so forth, and advertise accordingly and approach this a little more rigorously. But I'm not so certain that there will be, you know, favorable opinion on that level, but.
I think that the commission needs, the commissioners need to be involved, because just for example, say we get five volunteers for the ranching slot, you know, I mean, who are we going to pick? We have to pass that buck to the commissioners.
Well, our bylaws say the Planning Commissioner or the chairman may establish such committees as is deemed advisable.
Right, and we'd still, regardless of whether, whatever you guys want to do, we'd still let the commissioners know what's going on. If at that time they choose to appoint somebody, then that would change. We'd still, we're going to take it to them as a discussion item anyway, not necessarily a motion or a vote on it unless they choose to do that.
Would you guys feel more comfortable waiting until after the next board meeting, county board meeting, and let them say, give it their blessing, or say we want to appoint people?
You know, you really, what you're asking, I mean, we're calling it a committee, but what you're really asking for is a study group.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Exactly, yeah.
And I, I, I mean, to me, that's the truth of it, and you want to see what we have and think about what we might do in the future, and you want input from people. And, I mean, you're, you're doing the study group. It's different to me than, than a committee appointed, because we have done that as well, but to me, you're, you're trying to study it to figure out which direction to go and give that information to us.
That's an excellent point, I think, that this is, and this is sort of a, it is a research effort, really, more than anything.
Yeah, it's not a.
Sure, it has implications for policy eventually, but it is truly to try to, you know, familiarize ourselves with the ground of, of the plan, and so it seems to me we could simply operate on our own if we wanted to. That seems sensible. But if we wanted to have, I, I didn't know whether we wanted a grander effort, you know, that was.
And to me, this is the first step to the grander effort.
Could be.
Exactly. It seems like you, you'll go forward, but, but you can't really go forward until you figure out what it is you've got and what's out there that could make the difference for us, and, I, I don't know. Barbie, you're looking at me like, no, no, just don't interpret a look.
Okay.
Okay. That, that's how I see it.
Are we looking to call it a study group? Just verbiage for the memo I write to commissioners.
That's a really good idea.
I, I really believe it's more that than the committee. The committee is going to really be helping with a true recommendation of change.
Okay.
And that is different.
So just the memo would inform the commissioners that the study group is being formed by the Planning Commission, and here's proposed representation at this time, but no names.
How will you gather volunteers then? And how will you select?
Just in the past, sometimes what we have done is, I mean, you've got this list of really good folks, and I would ask commissioners if there's anyone that they would like to recommend, that, that you have some folks that are willing to, I mean, we talked about
Yeah.
The ranchers and the Hill City representative and those sorts of things. I mean, I, I just.
Personally, I would say that we wouldn't, for the ranching community representatives, both from eastern and western parts of the state, we might ask Lindell, because he has con, enormous contacts in the ranching community. I know the mayor of Hill City pretty well.
And, and I would recommend the mayor from Wall. He is really well-informed and energetic and.
And they may decline. You just don't know, but it's, you know, it's kind of a place to start.
Lead you to someone else.
Right.
They might be able to.
They might be, make recommendations. And for. Yes. Do you know who from the staff is going to participate?
Brittany, Cassie, and myself.
Who, who's the?
Brittany, Cassie, and myself.
And for Rapid City, it would be great if we could get somebody from their planning department, maybe Vicki Fisher.
Yeah, she'd be good.
So do we need a motion or something to go forward with, with this, or can we just do it?
Well, there's nothing that indicates there's going to be a motion on it today, but we're going to research Commissioner Troutman's question about the open meeting laws, make sure that's done. Staff will put together a memo to the commissioners for the next meeting, letting, giving them an update of what the Planning Commission has discussed and calling it a study group instead of a committee, and asking for their opinions and recommendations and representation from different agencies, different areas. If you'd like to make a formal motion, I guess you could.
And, and I think that it's important to let the commission know that this is just the preliminary that will lead to a committee.
This will push your timeline up a lot.
Yeah, that would be good. Okay. Okay, do we want to make a motion? If not, we can move on to the next agenda item, which is count 15, county board report.
Item 15, county board report, the Board of Commissioners concurred with the Planning Commissioner's recommendation from the August 10th, 2015 Planning Commission meeting.
Okay. We have no public? Are there any items from staff?
Verizon Tower hasn't gone through county board yet?
Which, which one? There's a lot of.
44, the, the one.
No, that was, the appeal was pulled by the applicant themselves, and they have not reapplied.
Do they have another option, do you think? Is that why they pulled it?
I cannot discuss why.
Oh.
Sorry. Possible legal action.
Okay. Items from the membership? Anybody have anything? To staff first. Oh, I'm sorry, staff. Forgot you.
So as you know, we have two vacant positions in our office, planner one and the ordinance officer. Those items were advertised. We received 32, 37 applications for planner one, and staff is going through those at the time to determine who they're going to interview. That interview committee is going to be Cassie, Kelsey, and Brittany. And the ordinance officer, we received 62 applications, a lot with law enforcement background, and at this time, I'm going through those applications. A full committee has not been established for that interview yet, but I am looking for a representative from the Planning Commission to be on that committee. Looking to do interviews probably first or second week of September. Don't know a date or a time yet, or how many. And there will be multiple interviews for this.
I can volunteer if it's after the 16th.
After 16?
Yep. Anybody else?
As long as we don't have four.
I, I'd, I'd volunteer for September, did you say?
First or second week of September, and there will be multiple.
Okay, in sense, all right.
Thanks PJ, that's a lot of applicants.
Ninety-nine applications total.
Just curious, for the ordinance of 62, is this regional applicants or?
Actually, yes. Surprisingly, those 62, most of them are local. It was the planner that most of them were out of state or out of country.
What if they are?
Most of the ordinance ones came.
Well, do you, when you advertise this enforcement position, do, do you say that they need any planning background at all, or do you just?
It, it's part of the job to go through the building permits, but they're primarily interpretation of the zoning ordinances, enforcement of zoning ordinances, and they kind of pick up the planning as they go along. The previous staff member that was in a position, it wasn't his primary job, planning, but he did help out when.
Right, yeah, that's what I'm thinking, yeah.
But the, the main thing is that they have to be licensed and certified within a year and a half of getting, of assuming the position.
Oh, I see, okay.
To be, to be an ordinance officer. And there's a, there's a national process for that.
Just wonder if a lot of disillusioned cops decided to find something better. Maybe so. Well, that's good, but, you know. Anyway, all right.
To find better.
Right. I don't know, being ordinance officer may be more dangerous.
It can be. Yeah, there are, there are times where you go out there and they don't want you on the property, and the person gets threatened, and then they have to leave and call the sheriff and come out there and represent you, so.
Are the ordinance officers typical, they're not armed, are they?
No, they are not. Just with their brain.
Can they be armed? Are they allowed to be armed?
I hope not.
I don't know.
I guess they could have.
That's a whole other conversation.
I'm just curious. Because, yeah, people can get upset.
Oh, yeah.
I've been once that we're under citizen's arrest.
Right?
Wow.
Oh, goodness. Okay.
One other item is an update from the Vacation Home Mental Committee. The next meeting is going to be September 10th at 2:00 PM. That's significant because it's only a couple of weeks away instead of their normal month to month that they've been doing. The primary thing that they have chosen to do is include suburban residential in vacation homes with a conditional use permit review. But again, this is just their recommendation to this body, and then this body will make a recommendation. The primary discussion of the last meeting was actually around the definition of the word transfer. State's attorney was represented by Kinsley, and she was there and proposed a definition which they so far have adopted and made a motion to approve. Whether that'll change or not, we don't know, but we did want to include a specific definition for that word in this ordinance.
So did they offer a definition, do you know of?
Yes, yes. If you'd like to hear it, I can tell you.
Yeah, I actually.
That would be great.
This is as it's written and as it was moved, approved. As used in section 319(c)(5) of this ordinance, the terms sale or transfer shall mean the grant or conveyance of an ownership interested, interest in VHR property for an entity or person to another entity or person, but shall not be defined to include the grant or conveyance of an ownership interest in the VHR property from one spouse to the respective spouse by lawful marriage.
Okay, so only the spouse is, that's, that's.
Not a proper implication. This is Kinsley's definition. And so subsequently, to include SRDs in the VHRs, they have slowly just methodically taken out parts of the ordinance that would have prohibited that or were only necessary because of the exclusion of SRDs, so.
So if they transfer it to their children, it's a transfer?
Yes.
Right, yeah.
How about in the occasion of, of a divorce?
Take that one.
That would be a transfer, wouldn't it?
Depends on the divorce decree, wouldn't it?
Right.
Are you talking about before the divorce or after the divorce happened or?
After the divorce, if they owned it jointly.
If they owned it jointly and then they.
What?
That would probably be a transfer, because they're taking it out of one person's name, and they're not a respective spouse at that point, so.
Right, okay.
But maybe it's something where they just want to think about doing it beforehand. That would be the easiest way to get around that, probably just get that done before they get the official divorce.
Interesting.
Another issue was kind of like corporations. If suddenly the control of the corporation shifted from one set of stockholders, if you will, to another, the, still the same entity owns it, you know, the corporation, but those who control it shifts, is, I mean, is that, is that a credible scenario? And if it is, how would we handle that? Or how would this definition handle it?
Yeah, so if you're dealing with the underlying owners, members of the corporation or LLC or something like that, we'd have to put in additional language to regulate that, but so far, this wouldn't regulate that, and that was kind of.
Being discussed.
Yeah, being discussed, being discussed by the committee that, that's kind of another thing to get into and.
And the question is how.
Necessarily want to get into that.
Yeah, I, I, I'm not so sure we want to get too involved, because I don't think it's going to involve most of these properties in that way, but.
And, and there was some discussion that things can be taken care of by doing reviews a certain number of years out, so some things transferred and you're going to have a review the next year anyway, so then you can see how things are going at that point. Or just based upon complaints, complaints can, can be reviewed because of complaints as well, so that could also take care of it if the idea is that you get the underlying members of the corporation change and it really, you know, makes the level of ownership, like, let's say they're just not.
Right.
They don't take care of the property as well, they don't own it.
But, but that's a function, then of the review, one could, you know, although I would think it'd be more difficult than to exclude them from the, from this situation, you know, but anyway, we would have the review to look at that, yeah.
I would, I'd like to apologize to you PJ and to the committee. I missed the last meeting. My computer died and I had no communication. I didn't know when the meeting was, and hopefully, I'm struggling with Windows 10. I'll be up and, up and going before the end of this week, but I've been out of, out of the ether for almost 10 days now.
You should have an apple, Barb.
I discussed that, yes.
I just installed that last night.
I considered it too.
That's not an official county endorsement.
No, 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 it is not, of course, but.
One of the other things that was discussed is trusts. You talked about corporation and, and the transfer of ownership within a family trust.
We'll leave it up to the legal definition.
Yeah, I, I just wondered if what we've done so far kind of addresses that in any way.
That would probably function as an entity, but we could further, I could further define it to include anything like a trust or similar type mechanism.
Yeah.
Yeah, because there's, you can get more specific in the language, and that might be a good idea. That was one thing. We, we kind of just put it together on the spot.
Yeah.
So, it could be something that we could add in there.
I, I just think that, that was something talked about a lot when this first came about, and I, the better the definition, the less likely we're going to have to address this next year, or the year after, if, if we could, I'll remember what it was that started it, but a family trust was one of the big ones.
Yeah, and if that's, if people are just as concerned about it going from one person to their trust, then we could definitely put that in there to make it so that it would fall under a transfer, and then...
I think if we could do it clearly, that would be good. Yeah, okay.
Are there any other questions for PJ?
Just again, September 10, 2:00 in our conference room.
Are there items for membership? I'll be gone the next meeting, 14th.
And 14th is going to be a big one.
Big agenda.
I know, it sounds like it.
You don't.
You have to attend by phone, or...
I'll be in Ireland.
Oh, gee, not by phone. I don't mind that you're going to Ireland, good for you.
Have a great trip. If there's nothing else, Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved.
Second.
I moved it and seconded to adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, we are adjourned.